Good evening. Good evening and welcome to our February study session. We have a media agenda tonight, so we'll dive right in after roll call. I will get started with Director Decker.
I am here.
Director Zavala Ordega?
Here.
Director Smith?
Here.
Director Barrows?
Here.
And I'm also here. I'm going to go ahead and have Dr. Snell kick us off with the agenda.
Thank you, Director Sproul, and welcome everyone to our study session on February 27th. We do have quite a few agenda items today. The study sessions are updates to the board, an ability to go in a little deeper with some of the strategic planning work that we're doing and other goals or work plans that the board is kind of familiar with and wanting updates on. And so a little different agenda than our regular meetings and our committee of the whole. Jefferson, does it look like our students are here yet?
Do not see them, actually. I was gonna go and send a panelist invite to them via email to see if maybe they're watching that instead.
Okay, if you could just kind of let me know, Jefferson, when they are arriving and we'll just kind of pivot and maybe actually go to the vision of a graduate preview because that might be the the easiest one to pivot out of and then we'll go into the school name consideration committees. And so Brian and Chris, if you're ready, maybe we'll start with your presentation and I'll pull those slides up while I'm getting you ready and then we'll just kind of stay tuned for our student advisory reps. So tonight's content, we have several items where we're going to go a little deeper and then we have some places where we're kind of going to give you a preview of information that we'll be coming back to in the March study session. And this first one, the vision of a graduate preview, is exactly that. And so I'll turn it over, Chris or Brian, when I get started.
Yeah, I was joking with Dr. Snell earlier today that did you ever feel or ever go to a big dinner party and there's this beautiful meal that's very healthy and very delicious? And we're still passing out appetizers and I feel like that's what our portion is. We've got little nibbles for you. Because I read, we finished our window a few weeks ago. The information is still fresh, teams are meeting and looking at data. And there are definitely some celebrations that we want to capture down to the classroom level. So we wanted to be sure to capture that while it was hot with you. But then also Brian will share at the end of his turn that in March, when we have our board study session, that we'll go much deeper and really focus on some of the growth information. So for now, high-level overview. Jeff, do you want to go to the next slide? So we wanted to start with kind of this high level of proficiency data and we wanted to be able to capture that against what fall looked like for students in VPS this school year. So this is only focused on this year. And you'll notice that we made some, we've made some gains from fall to now. Whoa, promote, okay, okay, sorry, thank you. We have nearly 5,700 kids who are in the proficient range. That's a gain of 1,300 kids from fall to spring into that or fall to winter into that proficient range, which is pretty significant. We have 421 students who increased from three or more years fewer. And we have 554 kids who graduated from one year below. So we're making some traction, some progress. But what does that look like across the board? You'll notice that 13,7, you know, 13,7 participated in this assessment. So this was mostly K8 with some high school sprinkled in. But Jeff, do you want to go to the next slide? We also wanted to capture what that looks like grade level to grade level and the growth. And I think this is pretty darn significant when you look at it, especially at our primary grades. And those foundational skills are really taking root. We, please recall that kindergarten is a significant outlier. In the fall, I Ready is not a required assessment for our kinders. So not all of our kinders participated in the fall I Ready. But 54% of all of our kinders who participated this winter are at proficiency level. And you'll notice we made gains in every single area. You'll also notice seventh grade, woo-hoo, that's a nice outlier at the middle school level. And we'll spend again more time in March talking about that. Can we go to the next slide, Jeff? One of the things that we spent some time talking about after our fall presentation was what does this look like winter to winter to winter to winter? And so we wanted to be able to capture that for you. And we also wanted to be able to capture what that looked like during that last year before COVID happened. That was pretty significant. So you'll notice in the dark green and light green, those numbers are pretty steady. But you'll also notice, if you can see the whole slide, that in the 1920s school year, only less than 10,000 of our students participated. And that's because it was only elementary who took that during that assessment. So we have significantly more students who were participating in I Ready, obviously, in 2021, 22, 23, and 23, 24. So really similar trends in the area of reading. And what we also want to highlight and capture is that our teachers are making a difference for students as we were looking at I Ready data. And again, we'll share significant growth, typical and stretch growth with you in March. We reached out to different schools to find out, hey, what are you doing at this grade level? What are you doing in this classroom to make such significant gains? And it was really great to have those conversations with principals and with teachers. Jeff, you can go to the next slide. One of the conversations I had was with a teacher, a Jenna teacher at Eisenhower in grade five, who had some great typical growth and some really good stretch growth. But what I appreciated as we spoke was that the three tenants of PLCs, you know, a focus on results, a focus on learning, and a focus on collaboration were all at play in the work that they did. This fall, she met with her team and not only did they use I Ready, but they also used Dibbles to really identify in a much deeper way what the needs of their learners were so that they could have some very targeted and flexible small groups. They worked on fluency, they worked on spelling, and they worked on writing, and that was diligent work that definitely paid off. They also did some great integration. They had a book club where they studied, they integrated novels into their reading study, but they also integrated science and social studies into their ELA or their literacy instruction, which promoted meaning-making for the kids. She said that they also did some projects with their kids, which made the work far more engaging and interesting, and that's definitely something that we're on fire about for our kiddos. That final piece is the collaboration. And in this particular, with this grade level and this school, it was not just her grade level team who was part of this work at really looking at kids and planning for their needs. It was also the work of different professionals, including their teacher librarian, in hooking them up with resources so that they could be successful. I really appreciated her comment at the end. She said, basically, it's a team effort. We couldn't do it without each other. We also really like working with each other, so that helps. So kudos to our educators, certainly at Eisenhower, but across the district. And we can't wait to share more when we have a much longer time with you in March.
So I think before I go to Brian, if you're okay with that, Mr. Graham, our student reps are on the call, Oasis Venus. And I'm going to go back to the slides because they have an update on the work that they've been doing in student advisory. So I get back here, sorry for the rapid slide movement. And Oasis and Venus, I'll turn it over to you to just introduce yourselves and the schools that you attend, and then I can walk through some of the slides that I know you updated some information on. Are you there?
Hello.
Hello, Venus.
Hi, I'm Venus Payne and I go to ITech.
And Oasis, are you there? Venus, do you want to go ahead and speak to this while we see if Oasis can come back? Just kind of where we're at with our goal and some of the activities that you did at the last couple of meetings?
Uh, yeah, sure. So when we are meeting at ITech, we set a district goal for 45% of our sense of belonging for our panorama survey.
Do you want to talk a little about what you did, what you've been working on at ITech?
Uh, yes, so we have Wednesday assemblies, which are fun games usually to create a better environment for things. We have Spirit Weeks, which was the other week for us. We're planning on talking about the panorama survey on our school news thing, which is fun. We're doing culture fairs, which is in April, hopefully. We do a lot of school dances and events, like we're partnering with PSA and Flex Academy for our spring fling. Our PTSA does a lot of fun nights and it's pretty active. Like there is a fundraiser tomorrow, I believe.
And Oasis, are you there to talk a little about what's going on at Skyview? Sorry, it looks like we're having some trouble connecting with Oasis. I know Taco Talks has been kind of a big topic at our student advisory as an idea that they're doing at Skyview, where they actually bring in some tacos and invite students to enjoy some food and share what's going on in their lives, the students, and things that can, maybe the school can do to better prepare. And then Skyview team made a commercial for the panorama survey to share with their school community and just highlighting why it was important and that students were paying attention to it and wanting students to really offer their authentic opinions as they went through that. I think that Director Zavala actually had a chance to attend their recent culture assembly last week, I think. And so those were some of the activities that Oasis was going to highlight. Doctor Zavala, Director Zavala, do you want to share any about your experience there?
Yeah, it was a really amazing assembly. I really enjoyed. They did a fashion walk and they spoke about what their attire, what it meant and where it came from, and the history around it. And there was a student, there's a teacher, a Native American teacher who spoke about his history and how he is the last Native American in his family, at least the percentages that he has. And then we had a student who spoke about being from two different cultures and the very different cultures and how at times she feels alone. And there's a student who was in front of me and she was in tears and just like, wow, this like speech was happening. And so I think it was just a very resounding people feeling seen and like they were being represented at this assembly. I think they did an amazing job at being respectful and also, I think, honoring the cultures that they have at Skyview. It just felt like the feeling within the gym as well, it just felt really celebratory and very loving, so.
Thank you for sharing your experience there. I just want to check in and make sure if Oasis has anything to add, if they're able to. Okay, our next slide then, Venus, if you wouldn't mind just sharing some of the things that we talked about in the last Zoom meeting related to our student leadership summit.
Yes, so we're having it on May 17th at WCV. We're trying to get some guest speakers and talk and have all the students do a bit more seminar-type things because I don't know how much you guys know about the leadership summit that happened last year. A lot of students are talking about how it was a lot of people talking at them and giving them definitions. We're trying to shift more into this is what we want to do. This is how you do things and this is how you apply them for leadership.
Thanks, Venus. And the groups tried to add to each of these different categories and planning the summit. So they offered ideas about the agenda, like Venus shared. They talked about how they would invite students to participate, what would that look like? And how could they get a good representation and build for next year's student advisory? We had a T-shirt last year and so we had to get ideas around the slogan, what that shirt might look like. And then we asked if students wanted to be involved in more of the planning. And so I think we had last I looked, maybe about a 10, 10 students that said, yes, they wanted to be on the planning committee. And so that's our next step is to work with them to really take the input that was given to us and really draft an agenda and all the activities that will happen at the Student Leadership Summit. Wazoo Vancouver has offered to host, and so we're able to bring a few more students and just really looking forward to the opportunity. Do you have any questions for Venus? Venus, is there anything else that you would want to add that you didn't get a chance to share yet?
Well, I don't know, not really.
Well, we really appreciate you taking the time and Oasis has been on the call, but for whatever reason, it looks like she hasn't been able to unmute, so we'll try to catch up the next time and see if maybe they can present again for us. And if there aren't any other questions, okay, then I think I'm going to take us back to finish out the vision of a graduate presentation with Brian, Mr. Graham, and the math portion of that. And then we'll go back to the school naming committee. Does that work for you, Director Sproul? Okay, so Brian, I'll get us to those slides.
Thank you, Dr. Snell, appreciate it. Can you hear me okay on the unmute? Okay, awesome. And I just want to thank our school board for their interest and inquiry into data in general, how kids are doing. Like how the kids are doing, how are they feeling in schools? How are they doing with learning? What's our evidence of that? What's growth look like? And we've had several questions since the last time that Chris and I had a chance to share with you some inquiry around different data points and just appreciate that inquiry. And we've tried, we have more slides. Again, it's a teaser for the next time, but I've tried to really listen to some of the questions and what your hopes were to be able to see and monitor. And want to be able to provide that for you and continue to ask great questions as data kind of sparks that. Jeff, do you mind going to the next slide? And so you're going to see the same four slides that Chris shared, but through the math lens. And then I'll share a story of growth from one of our schools and really the importance of celebrating success, what our schools are working on. And I mean, that's super exciting, the stories and the hope and the growth and the efficacy that happens inside our buildings. And so I want to shine a spotlight on that. And so this horizontal graph shows the same representation with math where you get to see in fall the overarching percentages in three or five different ranges. So students that scored mid or above would be a green score early on grade level. And so you can see those two together, we're having more students score above or on grade level, and then the yellow marker is one grade level below. And we have, let's see here, yes, less in each of those categories when we look at one grade level below or two grade levels below or three grade levels below, which is the trend we'd want to see for sure. You can go and go to the next slide. And so then articulating a little bit further, looking at each grade level, what does the comparison look like? And we would hope to see growth across each of our grade bands from fall to winter. And you see that, which is exciting to see. A lot of celebrations there for sure. This is showing us proficiency though. And so we get to see the percent proficient and also then wanting to look closer at, so what's happening with student growth? What are the measures that help us know how kids are moving across those levels that we saw on the last slide? And so we'll give you a teaser on that. I'm going to, I'll give an explanation on the growth story. But we certainly have that data ready to share with you at the next meeting. I think it's worth also naming that as we've looked at the reading slide that looks like this and also the math, that it's a point of inquiry around what's happening with our secondary scores at the high school level. Certainly, kids don't, you know, we're not having a a loss in learning from where you look at the ninth grade where it's around the 30th percentile and then down to 11 or 12%, 13%. So what's happening with the assessment there and the relevance for schools? And so that's a point of inquiry in our assessment review process as we've been engaging with schools, hearing from principals and teachers on how we can do a good job making really meaningful assessment decisions there. You can go to the next slide, Jeff? Okay, and so Chris shared this data and it's the same representation where you can see the last score we had in the winter, right before COVID in 2020, so in winter 2020, and certainly less students that took the I Ready assessment then. And so only first through eighth grade students took the assessment in that timeframe. Now, when you look at the past three years, there are kindergartners through eighth grade and also high schoolers. In mathematics, we would take it up through the algebra and geometry series, so the first two years typically in high school. And this does give an idea of the difference in performance for proficiency across those levels. It certainly brings up questions, makes me want to also look at as we look at grade levels, like how are different groups of students performing across grade levels going back to 2019, 20? What does that tell us about students coming through our system? And we have that data ready to share with you next time. And Jeff, you can go to the next one. The story of growth I'd like to share with you, and I'm going to explain a little bit about the data because it's really focused on growth. And so I'll share that with you here in a minute. This is from Jason Lee. And both their data sets really stood out as we compared them across the other secondary schools. And what stood out was the growth measures, both with students moving, improving placement, meaning, let's say I may have started at one grade level below in the fall, but then I moved up. That would be a movement across improving placement. And so we saw some really great growth in terms of the percentage of students improving placement as compared to other schools. And so as we recognized that data, we reached out and just as Chris said, is at the point of celebration and to learn and to celebrate, you know, our teachers and our school administrators who are instructional leaders out there making a difference. And what they shared was, there's really two things that really stood out. And the first one was they engaged students in a process of monitoring their own progress and setting goals. And so they challenged kids in the, like the Jason Lee I Ready Olympics and made a big promotion towards that, towards goal-setting and having kids set goals to do better than they did last time and engage them in that process. So students being involved in the goal-setting process and then also teacher teams going deeper into being really focused on essential standards, the clarity on what they were teaching. Kind of what Chris said, a common theme in terms of the big three in PLCs that were focused on learning, collaboration, and results. So that idea of teams focusing in on what they're teaching, how they're teaching it and intervening with students. They shared some specific strategies that they were using and we're anxious to hear more from them. So when you look at this data, and it's a teaser for next time, I gave you a reading set and a data set, but our mass set, essentially, we're looking at three different columns. And the first two are around growth. So what we would expect for typical growth as determined by I Ready. And where you see the 157%, it's a median score. So the student who is in sixth grade, we lined up all of our sixth graders, the median, the middle student, has achieved 157% of the typical growth, meaning they've already actually met the goal on their annual typical growth. In fact, 62% of the sixth graders have met the annual typical growth, which is super exciting. I mean, that's a point of inquiry. We're a little bit past halfway through. And that's a good indicator. And when you look at that across grade levels, it's like, wow. There's some cultural things happening here. What can we learn about what you're doing? Going over to the annual stretch growth, that's, that stretch growth idea is that I Ready sets a goal for you, for students, where if, hey, if you can really do this stretch growth over the next couple of years, you're going to be right back on track on grade level if you're a year or two grade levels behind. So the stretch growth is an exciting measure. And then the final column is around the percentage of students that have improved placement from fall to winter. And as we looked at these measures, we were seeing some pretty significant improvements around growth from Jason Lee. So to put a spotlight on their hard work and listen to that story and learn throughout our system. Dr. Snell, if you can go to the next slide? Chris, do you want to join me on the last slide here?
Absolutely.
There we are. Okay, I knew you were there. Do you want to take maybe the first bullet and then I'll hit the second one?
Well, we look forward to sharing with you, and I think we'll actually share it with you ahead of time so that you have a chance to look at and ask some questions, maybe prepare some questions for us for our March study session. But we delved a little bit deeper to look at how, what growth looks like in different groups within our system, what those cycles of learning were and celebrations were and wonderings are as a result. So we've broken that down and again, we'll be looking more at the typical and stretch growth in those groups.
Absolutely. That question around how are students growing is what we really have focused the next data sets on, in particular, students that may need the most support growing, like how are they doing? And to be able to look at that closely. And then we want to be able to share with you some of the next steps from the idea of what are we doing about it? How are we affecting practice and bringing people together around knowing where students are at, looking closely at our practice and fitting into some of the big district initiatives aligned with the strategic plan? So the essential standards work, we'll be able to give you an update on that. That's aligned with collaborative teams and the PLC structures. Some common tier-one instructional practices that we have a chance to refine and look at. There's some work that's been happening there. And I gave it a reference to an assessment review process that Chris and I have collaborated on pretty closely and had a chance to facilitate with multiple groups. We want to be able to share that with you. And so you can see the direction that we're heading and an opportunity to make things better in the classroom for teachers and ultimately kids.
And all of that work actually involves educators across our system too. It's not just work with the Chris and Brian show or Chris and Brian and Tosas. It is really exciting to work with educators across our system who have opinions and beliefs and practices and perspectives that really inform really strong work. And honestly, I think the And honestly, I think the, while I'm, we know the value of good instruction. We also are really valuing good assessment. And so looking at as a culture, what does data mean for us to make some informed recommendations for the future? We're really excited about that.
Chris and Brian, thank you so much. And just pause here and see if any board directors have comments or questions.
I just wanted to say thank you. I know I met with both of you in December, November. I felt like you really, I was very heard. So I love the focus on growth. You teased us for March. So now I'm very excited for all of that. And I think just drilling down and showing some of these success stories. So kind of painting the picture of what this data is going to do for us is helpful as a director. So thank you for that. I'm just going to throw out one question just to consider in the study session in March. And Brian, this is a little bit more towards you, but looking at the secondary data and know that our participation levels are lower in high school. And so how do we make that data be meaningful? And I'm sure that's part of kind of what you're already going to speak to, but I am, you know, when I'm out in the community, it is one of the things I continue to be asked about is, you know, why are we doing it? I always, you know, to my own children say, iReady is a temperature check. It helps us know where you are and, and how you're growing. But how it's going to be used in secondary, I think will be helpful to discuss and maybe clarify.
Any other questions or thoughts? Well, Brian and Chris, thank you for your time this evening. And directors, if you do have additional thoughts, the, the data there is here now. We're processing it. We just want to make sure that you have ample time in the study session to really go deeper. So between now and then, just let us know what, what that focus with, what you'd like it to look like. So. Director Sprowl, is it okay if I transition to the next topic?
Absolutely.
Okay. So last spring, the board received some questions about two of our schools and the history of the name of those schools. And you asked us to do some research and to engage the community about this. And so we have tonight Assistant Principal Dr. Nick Davies from Ogden Elementary and Principal Steve Stoll from Harney Elementary, who want to give an update to you on that work. They've both worked really hard with their teams and, and each other because of the process kind of going side by side. And it's a check in tonight with you and, and ask at the end. And so I will turn it over to you both and I'll pull the slides up while I'm doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Snell and Board of Directors for having us here to give you a quick update. So this is really just a high level overview. Steve Stoll and I have been working closely together along with the support from Andre Harganani, who I saw is here tonight. So shout out to him. Big thanks for his support. And so although we didn't do things exactly the same, we have done some, done our processes mostly similar in alignment. So we can make sure that we're on the same page as we go through. And so Dr. Chanel, yep, thank you. So what we are looking at is these two men, General Harney and Peter S. Ogden. And we wanted to use the VPS decision-making framework kind of as our overarching theme. And that's how this short presentation is laid out. And so the, there's another presentation that was shared with you all with much more detail. So we're not going to dive into the specifics of their personal histories and the background and why it was brought up last spring to you all. But we do want to talk about our process and how, when we brought it to our communities, you know, there's the, the troubling stuff in their history, but it came down to the question of, do the history of these men match the values of our schools? And that became our guiding question as we looked into if there's going to be a potential change at Harney or at Ogden. What would that look like? And again, going back to the values of our schools. And so Steve's going to talk about process.
Good evening, Dr. Snell and board members. Thank you so much for giving us just a minute of your time. Like Nick said, we did follow very closely a process together that matched each other. We were able to reach out with about 250 students altogether and about 50 community members between the two schools. We asked about the values of our schools versus the values of our, of the men that were named after, and then how else to best move forward. Yeah, we did give some really close attention, especially to those who were most impacted by this type of decision. At Harney, that meant both African-American and Indigenous students. And at Ogden, that referred to the Indigenous students as well. Interesting part there is when we started to get into this a little bit, about one percentage of the students of Harney that were interviewed even knew that we were named after a man. Let alone who we were named after or his history. And we had about 2% of community members that were aware of that as well. So we can head on to the next slide. Jeff, thank you.
So this is definitely a text heavy slide that we want some time to look at. But I'm just going to maybe read the first bullet point from each Harney and Ogden. Now, these are just supposed to be alternating or differing viewpoints that either kids or community members brought to us. So from Harney, a fifth grader who identifies as African-American, I really liked the name Harney. We're the first school, the first school in Washington. And we're, have lasted this long. We're Harney. I don't, I don't have to like him, but the people who, the people we who learning here are good, we're a good school. Similar sentiment over at Ogden with a fourth grader who identifies as Native American. We've had the names for so long, the person doesn't mean anything to us, but the school does. Our school is more than a name. And then a fifth grader from Harney saying, we should change the name. And a parent, very well, we are articulating how they also believe we should change the name. And so we saw a lot of different, differing viewpoints. And in the next slide, we bring up the point that this is where our, sort of, although the process was similar, how our communities have kind of interacted, or I should say reacted to our questions about, about this have become different. So I'll just speak for Ogden here. And right now there is a large amount of the, the students, the staff members, the community members, the parents that we've talked to who, who really believe that we should get rid of Peter S. From the name at Ogden Elementary. Just the fact that not many, many people even call it Ogden anymore. And Ogden is what else on the building? It doesn't, our current new building doesn't even say Peter S. Ogden. It just says Ogden. So people want that, there's a large percent that want that official. There is, to be clear, a smaller group who want a complete name change. I put a, a parent's perspective on the previous slide. And there is a very small minority who said, keep Peter S. Ogden.
And for Harney, the community is pretty split between if we keep or if we change the name. Right now it's about 40% change and 60% keep. But all of the committees that we've talked to, whether it was just a student group or just a parent group or bulk of that was together. They all recommend educating our students, staff and community. Because very few people were aware that we were named after one, after somebody number one. And then two, the history of the man that we are named after. So what they're asking for is a chance to get the word out and how do we get more voices to the table? Because we haven't been able to engage all aspects of our community that we would like. And so one of the things that we're doing is that we're going to include during our culture night coming up in April, a session just specific to our name change conversation. We're also working very closely with our arts teacher to, and our fifth grade legacy team to build a mural into the front of our school as you come into the library there. That will talk about the history of our school, being the first public school in Washington is something that we can be very proud of. And then what other things have we done over that 130 years or so that we've been a school? So education was the first piece that they recommended. Okay. So what we're asking for is for more time to engage your communities. We want to be able to do this process well instead of fast. Very curious to see if you guys have other ideas that you'd like us to consider and any feedback that you might have for us as we continue to move on this process.
Well, my feedback was it'd be first, thank you for doing all the work that you've already done. As we are aware, name changing can be a little tricky sometimes. And so I appreciate the, the job that you've had to do and navigating, you're talking to the community. And I feel like you guys are the ones that are leading this charge. And if you feel like you need more time to engage in the community, I think that that is, I mean, for me, as long as we're not talking, you know, years down the line and we forget about, like, we have it on the schedule for when are we going to revisit it? I, I believe you guys know best what you need to do with your community. I know that the idea of taking Peter S. Off of the Ogden is one that's gotten floated around a lot, particularly because, I mean, one of the great community members, former community members is Val Ogden. And she's a perfect example of, you know, someone who's actually been an incredible community member and contributed to a great deal of people. So and it is kind of interesting that Harney's, you know, had that name for so long, being the first school. It does make it a little trickier, but you guys know what you're hearing from your community. So.
I just, I had one question, one comment. Thank you for all the work that you both have done in partnership with the community, the school communities. I, I agree with Kathy. I think if you want to dig deeper and do a little bit more intensive community engagement, sounds like that's the right course of action. I'm very intrigued by the idea of just removing Peter S. From Ogden. I think that might be a creative solution. For Harney, it also resides within the Harney Heights neighborhood. Is the city just, and I'm asking this for clarification for the public as well. Is there any conversation in the city about renaming the neighborhood?
Yes, Harney Neighborhood Association actually two, three years ago went through this and decided to keep the name Harney. And so there is a precedence there. We have had a member of the Harney Community Association attend one or two of our sessions. So that's been done.
I think, I mean, any, whatever, I mean, reflecting the input from the community, of course, is important. But I think preserving that history as the first school of Washington is also important. So if there's some magical name that can do both.
Yeah, we've also had representatives from the city of Vancouver in our planning meetings, as well as the Clark County Historical Society. And one of the reasons too, to ask for a little bit of time is our neighborhood associations don't meet on a regular, like monthly cadence. And some of their meetings are in the summer. And so there perhaps is a better opportunity to engage them in the work as well because of the neighborhood names for both situations, right? Like trying to figure out like, if we change a school name and the neighborhood changes, stays the same or vice versa. Or like, what does that mean for our community? And how do we navigate that alongside of, of partners in the neighborhood and with city? We also did outreach to tribal leaders. And the feedback that we got was that if we got to a point where we wanted to change a name, that they would be happy to partner with us to present potential names that could represent the, the community and the history there in a positive way. But until we got to that point, they were grateful to be asked, but like, didn't feel like that they really needed to be involved in that. So.
And I just want to, for others watching or that may be watching later, this, that's a completely different occurrence than when we were looking at the changing the mascots. We got a very clear response from our Indigenous community members that the mascot at River and also at Minnehaha was offensive and that they wanted it changed. And so this is a different situation. So I just wanted to make that clear to anybody that might be watching.
And I think to that point, to Director Decker, like the more we can engage community, like as Nick and Steve said, that they have been successful in, in engaging, you know, 250 lots of students. But feel like there could be opportunities that maybe we're missing some perspectives on this. And so we don't want to assume anything in the process. And we had talked about a timeline where at this point we might be coming back to you with a recommendation. So instead of a recommendation, we're coming back to you with what it sounds like from head nods is an okay of like, maybe we can revisit this some more and then during next school year have a recommendation as to what would be the next step. And as both Nick and Steve referenced, there is a lot more detail in some of the materials that you received in your weekly update. So if you have any questions about that, you're welcome to reach out. We've been having, I think about monthly meetings. And Dr. Davies mentioned Andre Harganani has been a support as a, he's our equity director. And so he's facilitated a lot of the work as well. So.
I, I was thinking about this when Director Decker brought up somebody else with the last name Ogden as a community member. And then you guys might have already like considered this or thought about it, but I wonder about, like, are there other, it sounds like there are other people named Ogden. I don't know if there are other people named Harney, but I want, I don't know. I was like, I wonder if maybe like the happy medium is like keeping, keeping the last name, but like just changing like who it's named after or some sort of, like so instead of Peter X Ogden, it's whoever the other person is that Kathy mentioned, you know, or, or just options like that to where it kind of takes away the named after the person emphasis, but still keeps like the name or the, you know, especially it sounds like with Harney, there's more of a concern about kind of the history.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, I don't know. I just wonder if there are options like that. I don't know.
Yeah. And I think I want to just credit both Steve and Nick and the team is they've really tried to keep the question on, should the name be changed? Why or why not?
Yeah, okay.
Then knowing that there, there would be, you know, potential solutions or different, different ideas. And really being clear that the history includes murder. Like these are horrible acts against people who are unnamed and most do have a, a first name of a victim. But you know, we're, we're perpetuating a system that, that really gave the honor of being a school name to, to individuals that, as both Nick and Steve said, did not reflect the, the values of the community, the strong consensus about that point. And so, but they still are at the point of, should we change the name? Yes or no? And then would come back with the recommendation to you. And then if that is to change the name, then we would start to go through that policy and procedure and work through that with you, alongside of you, I guess, to make sure that you're comfortable with it. Okay. Well, Nick and Steve, thank you so much. And we'll see you at the next planning meeting, right?
Thank you.
And I am going to, we're going to now shift. Just keep us moving. Yeah. Okay. So we're going to shift into updates from our strategic plan and the work plan. So we started kind of moving back and forth a little bit this evening with the vision of a graduate. And the vision of the graduate, as you recall, is a set of attributes that we want for every graduate in Vancouver Public Schools, both from a learning and an experiential standpoint. And now we're shifting to the work plans that support that effort. And so Daniel Bettis is here this evening and to talk about a family and community engagement work plan. But it also crosses into the student experience realm work plan. And with a little bit of, I know Director Barrows, you've asked about the least restrictive environment and what that means. And so Daniel's going to touch on a number of things tonight. So I will get those slides ready and Daniel, you can take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So as, as Jeff said, we're going to focus on family and community engagement. So Jeff, you could go to the next slide, next slide. So we're going to really focus on that collaboration with families to better understand and support students with special attention. with special attention to the underserved and marginalized student groups. Go to the next slide. So really, the, the five-year vision is how do we create those strong collaborations with families between the school and the different departments to prove that meaningful access and benefit for students and families that are underserved and marginalized groups to support programs and services. Right next slide. So really, the why behind this is, is that the team really said that it, when families have that partnership and connection, it leads to that higher level of trust. And trust really leads to a greater sense of belonging to a school and community. With that sense of belonging, students then can begin to thrive in their learning and it within their community. And when families have that strong connection and partnership with their community and school, the district, their students can reach that full potential. Good, next slide. So really, those measurable outcomes that we want to see is an increased number of percentage of families that are engaging in measurable accessing information about resources. We want to have strength, we want to strengthen partnerships with, within our departments for families to expand that access and benefit to district information and resources. We also want to increase the opportunities for families to access the information and resources to ensure again that access and benefit for our most marginalized students. So again, next, next slide, please. So in the progress monitoring, we really want to continue it and strengthen department collaboration and planning to increase that accessibility of for parents to engage in their children's education. We also want to identify within our buildings, a list of contacts that implement parent and family engagement activities. We want to start a shift in that composition of student-centered equity teams to be more equal number of family members to staff members in a power sharing model. Next slide. So we also, as far as progress monitoring, really want to continue to have our strength, strengthen our departments by having meaningful opportunities for students to have that greater sense of belonging via advisory groups. And so families have that voice and participation. So I've given some examples of those, these, these are not an exhaustive list. It's special education, family and equity, student title, dual language and career in college readiness, known as CCR. I mean, so quick description. So really, it's all about creating those opportunities for voice. Next slide. So as we look at the summative reports, advisories are thriving as evidenced by the increased numbers of advisories. The district currently is hosting 17 different advisories with approximately 275 to 300 members. So what I'd like to do at this time is kind of take a segue into kind of looking at an advisory that, that our team in special ed is supporting with our families. So Jeff, if you could click on the link. So really what we're gonna, we'll have an opportunity right now to really dive into the special ed advisory. But not only that, but what the team, the special ed team is doing to support that work. So really what we see is it's a journey. The journey started in October and really what we looked at is creating kind of, where is our current state? What are we currently doing to support our students with special needs? And then really kind of looking at what are some of the different components of their journey as they navigate the system here in Vancouver Public Schools? It was really digging into the, the data and the core beliefs and kind of the present levels of where we're at. Then looking at what are some things that we're doing maybe differently over the course of this school year? Which ultimately through march through the end of the school year, really looking at getting voice around, what does community-based schools look like for our students in an inclusionary practice? So good, next slide. So really what we started with was that OSBI vision, which we've all heard, which is really students have the right to meaningfully participate in the general education setting, both academically and socially to the fullest extent possible. Really, we want to have individual students really access their community and feel a part of that community. Good, next slide. So really, our historical model that we shared in the data that we reviewed with our team is really sense that we remove our students from generally classrooms to receive their special education services rated from a small amount of time to really all day. So go ahead, next slide. So this slide really kind of depicts that as far as how the percentage of time that students are removed from the general ed setting. So this is like a tutorial of percentage of time over the course of the last four years. Really, I want to, I want to focus in on our current year. So if you look at the number of students who have IEPs that are accessing 80 to 100% of their day, basically that is at 65.6%. We look at students that are receiving services in basic at 40 to 79% of their days, at 17.7%. And then of course, those that are being served very little in basic ed is 14%. So you can see at the first column to the left, as far as into 80 to 100%, we're certainly seeing some growth. You certainly would want to see that growth, a greater growth. And that's the work of the journey that I talked about a moment ago, really looking at how can we enhance our opportunities in our system to allow for students to access their services within a general ed setting? Good, next slide. So really, the research confirms what the state has already positioned us for and what we are targeting in our district, which is it confirms the best way to serve students with disabilities in the general education setting and not to silo them or move them into a special education classroom. Next slide. So really, the vision that we've talked about in our training with our advisory group is how do we support buildings to create a greater sense of belonging for all of our students in increasing inclusive practices? Next slide. So really, it's about how do we, oh, go back one. Yeah, so it's how do we, it's really about how are we as a district, which is going to be the last couple of opportunities, three opportunities for our advisory group is how do we strengthen inclusive practices here in the district? Next slide now. So this is really about how special education right now is really supporting the work of inclusionary practices. So we've established some goals. So one of the things that we've really targeted in the last few years is really realigning our IEPs to be standards aligned. So their grade level standard aligned. And then also looking at our curriculum and making sure that our curriculum is standard aligned and also is supporting IEPs. We've also worked with other directors to really look at a co-teaching model that is, that creates those essential functions and instructional models that support co-teaching across the system. So it's the same if you're, if you're experiencing ML in the classroom or special ed. It's, and then also too, we're participating in the IPP grants still, which is really focusing and collaborating with other departments around MTSS. And then also increasing family, staff and community voice through our special ed advisory. So those are kind of our goal areas, really support the work to move to inclusionary practices. So next slide. So right now for co-teaching, I've shared previously, we have five inclusion preschools. We have seven special education teachers at the middle school that are participating in co-teaching. We have 13 special education teachers at the high school level. And we've developed, as I said a moment ago, a co-teaching model with other departments. We have cross-departmental ongoing training as well to support the co-teaching model. Next slide. So what are we currently doing? Again, we've had, we've completed two of our four advisory group meetings. We've completed two teacher administration instructional coach, co-teaching professional development opportunities. 89% of our special education staff are using Goalbook, which is a, a format or a process by which teachers can write those standard-aligned IEPs. We also have elementary co-teaching pairs identified for the 24-25 school year. Next slide, please. So really, our next steps to, to continue to strengthen inclusive practices is by leading district-wide co-teaching trainings, leading special education advisory work, continuing that work, offering coaching cycles to support our teachers in this good work, partnering with principals to identify co-teaching pairs and partnering with principals to develop a master schedule that will support co-teaching and inclusive practices. So, next slide. Go ahead and, yeah, so we'll go back to, yeah. So now we'll kind of walk back to the summative report. I think, okay, yeah. So to continue on, La Plaza is, is thriving in supporting our families. We have approximately 150 adults and 160 students that are participating. We, La Plaza has added a GED program, which 15 individuals are engaged in. And also too, we have our first cohort of Spanish-speaking newcomers that are participating in a welding fabrication class that began in February. And, and their support with ML staff as well. Next slide. So our next steps are continue to build the virtual online opportunities, avenues for community input and guidance to segregate metrics to really understand how many marginalized and underserved families are engaging. To continue to strengthen the partnership with schools and districts, departments in support of underserved families. Also continue to incorporate parents as equal members within staff with our building-level student-centered equity teams. Continue to provide those advisory opportunities for our families. And also to continue to increase opportunities to add new ways for families to access information and resources to ensure access and benefit for our most marginalized students and families. So I think that's it. That was a lot, I apologize.
No, no apology, that's a big goal. And I think I appreciate you going deeper into the special ed advisory work. I just want to pause again and see if there are questions or comments from board directors around this work plan.
I just wanted to comment that I got to tour this morning with Daniel, our early learning inclusive preschool classroom. And it was just really nice to talk about kind of what we went over today. Thank you.
Yeah, it was great to have you out, it was great to be able to show you the classes.
I didn't tour with you, Daniel, but I was at Marshall for, to tour additionally. And Mandy knows my love of the littles, so she brought me in through there. And I, I can, you can tell right away that the percentages are more balanced this go around and there, the kinks have been worked out. And you could just tell that things were getting better every, you know, every day, every month. And so it looks, it looks great. You could just tell that there were enough gen ed kids and special service kids that it was really beneficial for everyone involved. So I appreciate the work that has gone into doing that. And I have to say that the thing that caught my eye right away was including parents in the equity advisor teams in the building. I love that, I think that's terrific. It just supports the idea that we're all partners for the success of the kids in the community. So I, I love that idea.
Thank you, Kathy, I'll pass that along to the team about the early learning, thank you.
I don't have any questions right now, I'm sure I will have more questions for you. And I appreciate all of the questions you've already answered that I have. But also just allowing me to be part of the special ed advisory group. I have really appreciated getting to know teachers and families through that process. But also, you know, I've, I have met with you and your team several times to talk about special education. And I, I just appreciate your teams wanting to really be thoughtful about inclusion and really kind of seeking community feedback. So parents, teachers, and really just being thoughtful and purposeful about inclusionary practices. Cause it, it can sound like, I mean, it is a great thing and it can just sound like, yes, let's just do it. But I think the implementation can be a big, a big shift for students, for teachers, for families. And just making sure that it's really purposeful. Because it would be, it would be really easy just to take a lot of students and just increase their time in general education. But it might not necessarily be purposeful or beneficial. So being thoughtful and purposeful about it, I'm, I appreciate that you guys are doing that. So I probably, I will probably have more questions for you as we go along. But just thank you for answering all my questions so far and, yeah.
Absolutely, Tracy, we appreciate your questions. Cause again, those questions really challenge thinking, right? And it really moves that work, like you said, in the right direction. And one of the things that's really, that I've taken away from the advisory group, you know, we talked a lot about voice, but it is really critical and the transparency that the families who have come up afterwards to say, we just really appreciate the transparency, the willingness to allow us to share our thoughts and where we're at with current practice and where we envision the work moving forward, which is really gonna, again, to your point, is really gonna support that work moving forward.
Yeah, I think as, as we were talking, I did think of kind of one question, it's not necessarily to answer now, but just to be thinking about, I do, you know, I had asked you for some more updated data. We dug into some of the comparison data, like the LRE percentages at one of our bed advisory, special ed advisory groups. They kind of compare Vancouver to several districts around the area in terms of their percentages. You know, and you sent me the more recent data from the past couple of years, which I appreciated. And I guess one, one wondering that I have is, I mean, there's some slight changes in like the percentage of students in like the 80 to 100%, but I would be curious what some of the, what you see as some of the barriers to, like maybe why that hasn't shifted, especially because I know, it sounded like a lot of, like even just learning support services are pullout. So, you know, ta, you know, taking kids out of the classroom for like a 30-minute reading group or 30-minute math group. So, I mean, you can think on it or talk to your team or if you have any thoughts right now. But, you know, just what are some of the barriers for kind of moving that number into like higher percentages like upper 60s, 70s? I would just be curious about, is, is it just, you know, is it, is it the scheduling? Is it just the habit of, of doing pullout? Is it, you know, teachers don't have the training they need or don't have the staffing they need? Or kind of what are some of the barriers to that?
I appreciate the question, what I'll do is I'll gather some input from my team as well. I have some thoughts, but we'll gather our thoughts and share that with you and the rest of the directors.
Perfect, thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna jump in here, Daniel, thank you for all this information, thank you so much. Looked like it was a beast put together, so I appreciate your efforts. And I just, Tracy kind of beat me to, to one of my questions, which was the bear, the question about barriers. And how do we, how do we increase inclusion when it's, when it's best for the students, right? So like, I don't want, I don't want people to leave, watch this and leave thinking like, we're just pushing kids into classrooms where it's not appropriate for them to, you know, to be that they're, they're gonna be where they're gonna get an education that, that helps them thrive and grow. And, and inclusion is not necessarily easy. In fact, in some cases, it's even harder. So I think it's, it's powerful work and I appreciate all your, your efforts. I want to take the opportunity to advocate for co-teaching, because that was like the one thing I was looking for and you had it. So thank you for, for mentioning it. I've had the good fortune to, to be in a co-top classroom, to be one of the co-teachers. And it was amazing and it was fantastic. It was fantastic for me and my, and my partner and my, and the students in our classrooms. Like it was, I cannot, I cannot stress just how incredible an opportunity it can be for everyone in the classroom. But we need to make sure we're providing schedules that foster a successful co-teaching relationship, partnership, that we're being mindful about how we put those partnerships together, that we're providing the resources to make sure that it's a successful partnership. It's, it's incredible when it works. But absent those pieces, it, it can just be kind of, you know, inevitable failure too. So just making sure that those partnerships have opportunities to collaborate and plan together. And that they have, like I said, schedules that, that help that be successful and not create barriers to that success. Help that be successful and not create barriers to that success. Um and I saw it in the PowerPoint that you guys are keeping that in mind, so thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. I would, I would agree completely with what you said on the last point about co-teaching. It's really critical to have that co-planning time. And to also have the ability to have that professional development upfront so you understand. And again, you can't force co-teaching. Um it's got to be a mutual, like you shared, two people coming together to say, yes, we're gonna, we're really passionate about this. We are building, we're working with departments. To really collaborate on how we create opportunities for those relationships to occur and then create opportunities. In both the elementary and secondary levels, so those schedules work so that they can, they can have those planning times. As far as the first part that you talked about, LRE is not going to go away. We have to provide a continuum of services. You can't have a one size fits all. So again, IEP teams have to be thoughtful when they're looking at what services a student needs. We just need to make sure that we don't rule out having that experience in general ed. And that's kind of our emphasis, giving teachers the right skills around universal design, around that co-teaching component. Um strengthening our own standards based, I understanding both on the basic ed side and on the special ed side. Providing curriculum on the special ed side that is standards based. So again, it's, it's all those pieces working together and it's again, out of one size fits all.
Thank you so much for saying that.
Yeah, you are welcome.
I just had one um comment slash thought as I was. Going through your presentation, I appreciated the deeper dive into how you're leveraging the special ed advisory. To kind of inform your work and um I know the advisory structure is something that was born during that. Dr. Snell's first year where we really started kind of um activating advisories in different segments of our, our district um. But I liked the then the jump over to talking about some of the other family community engagement. For instance, La Plaza, which is not only supporting our newcomers and multilingual, but also building community and. I have to imagine as a parent, having the opportunity to serve on the special ed advisory, there's also a lot of shared experience and community building. Are there ever opportunities? I mean, obviously for practical purposes, we can't have. Two hundred person advisory committees. It's not a productive meeting structure, but. Are there, are there opportunities to expand and engage more families to build that community aspect in the special ed advisory? I don't know. Similar to La Plaza, I guess.
I certainly um foresee that happening as we get, as we go on through this journey. I think that that's gonna bear out probably because again, there's connections that are happening. Within and we're actually seeing our attendance grow. We started at about twenty, twenty-five and now we're up to about thirty-five. Which is, which is a pretty good group for um what we're doing. So I think as that word gets out and start building, I think that might be a next step, but I really wanted to. To be authentic for that team, what they were, that group of community and parents need in order to. Feel like their voice and their support is leaning in a direction that they need.
No, it's, it's nice to hear it's growing. How um? When student, when families are engaged in that. Is there an application process or is it just kind of all are welcome or are there, is there a consistent term that you utilize in your advisory?
It's a one come all. We just, we just encourage everybody to, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Director Sproul, to your point, probably as we grow. We'll have to think about different structures, like that will be a good problem to have potentially. Keeps advice um where people can have authentic opportunities to share. And then what other networks might, might occur um as uh kind of next steps. So a good example would be the family advisory structure. Last year, I think you saw data in our last study session that. With some of the tools that our communications team has used, we have increased the number of applicants and people interested in things. And so this year, when we had that, um we didn't want to tell them, you know, hey, you're not on family advisory. Thanks, thanks and see you later. Um so we tried to look at other groups um that might benefit um and. Provide other opportunities for people to engage in some way and so. I think we'll have to, hopefully that's a good challenging problem that we'll have, right? Like that we want everybody to feel like these are a part of of their, their responsibility and also opportunity that they have to influence the district.
Yeah, I I definitely see down the road this being, I mean, a twofold a benefit in terms of advisor and advising the work, but also. Building community, especially in focuses that stretch across multiple buildings, right? So you know, i- if you want to join the PTA and feel connected to your specific school, but. Is there an opportunity to have that kind of sense of community with other parents or families district wide?
We also see it in like our structures, like the community leaders advisory, which I know that you represent the board sometimes as we, we tend to have a lot of nonprofits that. Attend those meetings regularly, community nonprofits, and so we see them making connections in our meetings, um which is great, right? Like we want to be able to um have the network um where you have people that are caring about the community and want to do good by it and. Have opportunities to talk about the work and and how they might amplify the work through the partnership, so.
Thank you.
Daniel, thank you for the presentation this evening. Um we're to our final two speakers tonight. And we have uh Mrs. Janelle Ephraim, who will talk about student centered experience and one of the goals. In that plan, um and then we have Kristy Lindholm, who will give an update um on high cap and trauma informed practice, so. Um Janelle, it's like you're ready, so I will pull up the slides.
Good evening. Uh good to see all of you this evening. Um as Jeff shared, um I'm going to uh give you an update on the student centered experience work plan. All right, and the last time that we were together, um I reviewed our vision of a graduate, which is to design learning experiences. That motivate each student to realize their potential and love for learning. Uh we want students to see themselves represented, supported and loved through engaging instruction, curriculum. And have high expectations for their ongoing success towards a vision of a VPS graduate and beyond. So in addition, our overarching goal is to develop and sustain a culture of belonging, safety and positive student staff relationships. In review, our supporting goals are to increase access and inclusion for underserved and marginalized students. Strengthen access to necessary and necessary supports uh for each student to thrive in our school communities. Strengthen support provided to students and families for transitions through grade levels through um schools and graduation. As well as ensure student behavioral expectations are clear and discipline outcomes are equitable. And that last uh goal is where I'm going to um focus this evening. Thank you. So as a refresher, our five year vision is through professional development, designing structures and fostering partnerships. We will develop a culture of belonging, safety and positive relationships with students, families and community. Next slide, please. As we continue to explore these goals this year, um again, we are collecting baseline data in most of our areas. However, it'll be important to note that with our exclusionary data, um we are comparing our uh data to previous years, given the historical work that we've been doing in this area. So as I reshare our measurable goals, um. Please note uh the through line are focusing on equity priority uh groups. So with our outcomes, we aim to increase the percentage of students experiencing supportive relationships. Self-efficacy and belonging and decrease disproportionality of equity priority student groups as measured by panorama. We want students to increase the percentage of students attending ninety-five percent of the time and decrease disproportionality for equity priority student groups. We'd also like to decrease the number of days for students experiencing, experiencing exclusionary discipline and decrease disproportionality. Uh next slide. And our last two are to uh increase the number of students participating in transition interviews. As well as increase the number of students reporting positive experiences in their K twelve educational um experiences measured by. Qualitative qualitative data, excuse me. So next slide. So this is just a review. Um in the fall, uh you looked at panorama data for third through fifth grade. As a baseline measure and next slide. You also looked at data for um our sixth through twelfth graders. Next slide. And those are just review slides that you already had a chance to look at. So um also during our first update, if you recall, um you had an opportunity to hear about uh sub-goals focusing on cultural competency, diversity, equity and inclusion. Our mental health supports for students and families, kindergarten jumpstart, sixth grade kickstart and our partnerships with student management uh with our VEA. And so here's uh time for progress to update, so. As previously mentioned, um I'd like to focus tonight's progress update around our sub-goal of ensuring student behavioral expectations are clear. And discipline outcomes are equitable. As well as the measurable outcome of decreasing the number of days for students experiencing exclusionary discipline. And decreasing disproportionality for student groups. I'll share some general trends with you and uh share more specific data at a later date. So as we focus on ensuring student behavioral expectations are clear and discipline outcomes are equitable. As a district, we're actively implementing things like restorative practices and Champ Stoic. You all had an opportunity to see, see this firsthand during your site visits last week. During your visits, you uh witnessed Champ Stoics in classrooms, hallways, uh different spaces, uh but you did witness these expectations. Whether um they were in different forms, they could have been orally, visually or electronically. Um I want to highlight some of the things that uh people in our system are saying about the Champ Stoic work. Teachers are sharing how instrumental Champ Stoics work, the Champ Stoic work is in creating a working environment suitable for students. Uh they go on to explain that the practice of implementing routines centered around champs has allowed them to um. Their students to become more independent, therefore increasing time uh for them to be able to support um students one on one. And students are sharing things like champs specifically, uh champs helps me save time and know what the expectations are. And other students say things like um it helps me know what to do and what not to do. As far as our restorative practices work, it's another way that we're focusing in on this area. The foundation of restorative practices is establishing, maintaining and repairing relationships in a safe and supportive environment. And really restorative practices is more than just a school's response to misbehavior. But it looks at school disciplinary issues through a different lens than what we have traditionally looked at it or that how we've traditionally looked at it. Um and this lens really can help us better create a sense of community and belonging in our schools. So this is an excellent segue to our next slide. Thank you. As we look at measurable outcomes around decreasing the number of days students are experiencing uh exclusionary discipline. So there's been an overall reduction in exclusions across all groups compared to previous academic years. And while I share more comprehend, while I will share more comprehensive data with you. At a later date, I wanted to highlight a few areas in our system where we have seen a significant reduction in exclusionary discipline as well as classroom referrals. Um you'll note that office referrals at Fort Vancouver High School have been reduced from over four hundred classroom referrals last year. To under fifty classroom referrals to date this school year. And also um students in our alternative learning programs like Back on Track or Success Academy. Went from multiple discipline referrals leading to exclusion to zero year to date in our current school year. So one student in um in one of those um ALE or alternative education programs stated that he says uh. This program is better for me because I can actually do my work, staff help you and I choose not to get in trouble. I've grown up because the staff is is so respectful. Next slide, please. So our next steps uh include continuing to implement and train staff in Champ Stoic, restorative practices. As well as trauma informed practices, um that you'll hear more about uh from Kristy here a little later. As well as provide continual opportunities for staff to work alongside community partners and district family liaisons. In addition, we'll continue to monitor discipline and exclusionary data with a laser focus on disproportionality for our equity priority groups. Really appreciate your time tonight. Just wanted to know if you have any questions.
Uh Janelle, I just want to say that um data on exclusion is so. Like it takes this heavy heaviness that's been on my heart since. Last, the end of last year when we looked at some of our exclusionary data, um it takes that off, not completely, but a great deal and um. I feel like Champ Stoic, while it's not a magic bullet, it certainly is pretty stark on close. Along with really recognizing how to do restorative practices rather than just saying we're doing them, but actually. Following what the research says on when it is beneficial and how it is beneficial, so I am. That your presentation has made me so happy. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you. I, it's great to see the um. Data, one thing that's kind of been threaded through this whole night is just the the qualitative feedback. I really appreciated hearing just. How educators are responding to some of these new structures um and then to see the data that is actually um. Making positive change, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Janelle? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Janelle. So we're on to our last speaker this evening. Kristy is here with us and um this is the, or it's a high cap report update, but it's under the umbrella now of student centered experience. So Chrissy has given some high cap updates in the past and those were also included in your uh reference materials, just to kind of see the journey. Um that we've been on, um but Chrissy, I will turn it over to you and get the slides going for you.
Thank you. You know, you're in a bit of a time crunch when your slides start on number fifty-six, so. I'm aware we've been here a while and if you want to get up and do some Go Noodle or uh Mindful Minute, something like that, but um. I'm pleased to come back and report on the changes that we've made. We talked, what we talked about a lot last year is what do we need to do to get better at this? And so we were able to make quite a few things and feel like we're experiencing a lot of success and on our way to more change and. Which will amount to more success for kids, so. The next slide is similar to what, it's actually the same slide that Janelle had up before about the goals under student centered experience. And I highlighted the first two. Because we feel like this is where we're shining this year and then E one C, strength and support for families and students in transitions to grade levels. You'll see that as kind of our learning edge as we walk through the slides, as things that we know that we need to start paying more attention to. This year, we've really been focused on elementary. We had expected we would be able to do more with secondary, but our needs were. Greater at elementary and that's where we've really spent the majority of our time, so. Let's go to the next one and look at our first success that we want to talk about. We talked before and we had been to a few even um. The WADA Board Retreat sessions on universal screening and the state will start to require that for everybody next year, so we're about a year ahead. And we're really excited to get the results that we were hoping for. So we're eh with the universal screening, we already did our fifth graders. We will be doing our second graders um next month. And what we are finding is that rather than just identifying kids who are high achieving, who are really good at school, who do well on I Ready, who's, who perform well in class. And um. Everybody kind of sees them as as a high achieving kid. This task, this niggly, our niggly eerie universal screener that we're using is really helping us find those kids who we hadn't seen before. And so a different group of kids who have different needs and as predicted, their needs are are starting to be met by some of the different service models. and as predicted, their needs are are starting to be met by some of the different service models that we are putting into place. So this is super exciting. And you can see the number, we identified seventy-one fifth graders using the Nagliary in the fall that we had never seen before. So that was exciting. So these are kids who have been in our system perhaps for five years, six years and just had never come to our attention because they don't present as your typical straight A student or high achiever. So this is exciting. Next slide is just a really basic. We hit a couple of slides because I didn't want to get into the weeds with exactly how the Nagliary works, but this is why we use it because it is not, it doesn't rely on a kid's language ability or ability to read, even though there's a verbal section, you can see it's really about pictures. If you wanted, you could go on to the Nagliary website and take their free fifth grade exam. That's what I did. Not sure I would qualify, but I did do all the little puzzles and tests and it was fun. It reminded me of being a kid and and looking at different ways of solving math problems and word problems. So I encourage you to give that a whirl. That was kind of fun. And you can see when you have more time, you get a report that a teacher might see, a report that a parent might see. So you're getting some more in-depth information. The next slide is our next success we wanted to share with you, and that is how our intensive high cap support class is going. And we included some quotes for kids and really to highlight the fact that what we wanted is what kids are experiencing, which is a different level of rigor, a different level of engagement, where kids are seeing themselves as a part of a different kind of classroom community. We have some you know, some predictable bumps about like, what is this class anyway? And who are you kids? And you're new to our school and there's that kind of cultural building that Lee and his team at Truman are doing with the teachers and the kids and the families. But what kids are saying about what they're learning and their opportunities that they have is exactly what we hoped for. Give you a couple of seconds to read those. Any thoughts or questions about what kids are saying? We have had, classes are pretty small this year. We expect that next year, because of the universal screening, we'll have a lot more opportunity to offer more parents the class at an earlier age. So we'll have a lot of second graders who would be qualified for third grade entry. Hopefully, we have enough for three classes is what we're kind of planning for as as Eisenhower sunsets. We'd like to add another class to the two that we already have. And then we may not do the three, four, five grade level span. We're looking at, can we just do maybe two grade levels? Or do we have enough for just a third grade? So I'm trying to figure out how best to meet the needs of this group of students that we're now finding. Go ahead.
Just, you just answered a lot of my questions just now, so thank you. But I'm curious, do we identify or do we anticipate, excuse me, that Truman will kind of be the home for the intensive high cap or would there ever potentially be like rolled out to different school sites?
I think we'd like, I mean, and this is just me talking without having checked it out with anybody else. I'd love to see them in different places since we're not able to provide transportation. And so, but I don't, I don't know. We have to see what the need is and what physical capacity of different buildings are before we're able to answer that. But ideally, it would be nice to have them in different places so that they're easier for parents and kids to access.
Thank you.
There's a little bit of the progress that we're engaged in. Told you about starting with the second graders and doing the universal screening. Part of that will also be to do a single subject identification with our third graders. And looking at as they score in the Nagliary, are they coming out as just whiz whiz bang mathematicians or are their strengths really in language arts? Or might they be both? And the reason for that, you'll see in a little while, is to really help us keep track of our high cap kids as they enter into secondary and they're making all different kinds of elective choices. Because right now, we're losing a few of them. We don't really know where where they are, how we're serving them. Because we we used to just identify them under this big umbrella of essentially high achieving. And so we're, we're trying to drill down a little bit and narrow down where their skills and talents are. We are working towards getting more more schools to adopt a cluster model of high cap students. We talked about that last year as part of our range of services that we would enact for this year so that every school feels confident that they are able to serve their identified high cap students. And so we're already working with principals and instructional coaches to work with teachers on what that might look like. And then what part of our design is that each student, sorry, each school will be able to say, this is our continuum of services for how we serve our our high cap kids at our school. Want schools to have some say in that so that teachers have some agency in how they provide services to kids, knowing that we are definitely not only obliged legally, but it's what ethically we need to do is to really provide what those students need to benefit from from the learning that we're offering them. So to that end, we've been offering a lot of professional development for instructional coaches, for building leaders, and then they are turning around and offering PD for their classroom teachers so that teachers feel more competent and confident in providing services to all the kids. Let's see, next slide really just shows again, this is, you've seen this many times now. But the continuum of services that we want to offer, and so we showed this again to leaders and coaches the other day about somewhere in this panoply of services, your school needs to identify how it's going to start really being able to specifically say how each kid's identified student is getting their needs met. Okay, and then the next slide. Talked about this a little bit, about PD that people are receiving. And another exciting piece that Jen, who is our High Cap TOSA, who helped me put together all these slides, she's been meeting with coaches individually, sometimes by request, sometimes by her own invitation of, can I come out and work with you? Like, what does your school need to be able to come up with a continuum of services to be able to cluster and feel good about it? And so that's been work that I think lights up her day and makes her feel really close to the work because she's starting to see how people are approaching their own skill set and and meeting the needs of the student group. And then the next slide is a little busy perhaps, but it's it's an indication of what I was talking about, that as kids enter into middle school, right now, if they've been identified as high cap, they're forecasted into honors. Typically, that is language arts. And since we worked on the math pathways, we have different options for kids and that is directed by their high cap identification, but also by parent and kid desire for how they enroll in classes. Where we're having a little bit of a struggle is if you're identified under the umbrella of high cap, but you really don't like math, but you're forecasted into a high-level math class or vice versa, where you're forecasted into an honors English class, but that's not your strength or your interest. Then there can be a mismatch with how kids are experiencing school. So we want to clean that up a little bit. And then we looked specifically at our choice schools, ITech and BSAA, where a lot of the work that they do, they consider accelerated, and so they don't have the tags on them, like honors this or that. And so our kids, we're having a hard time saying whether or not they're actually that we can say, yes, this kid is getting their needs met because they're in this kind of class, therefore that qualifies as part of their continuum of services. So these are things we'll be looking at as we approach next year and how we work with what's going on in secondary and forecasting from fifth into middle and then eventually middle into high school.
Yeah. Can I ask you before you move on to the next slide, the, obviously, the the last line there with heights is kind of jumping out to me just because there's quite a few zeros. I'm just curious how, like what your thoughts are, because obviously there's, you know, students attending heights who are identified as high cap, but I'm just wondering about like the the ability to access some of like accelerated classes or is it just because there's not, there's not access? Or what are your thoughts on how students might be able to access?
Tracy, is that I wish I'd asked that question myself, so I had a better answer for you.
And you can, and you can, I mean, you don't have to answer. I mean, it's just jumping out to me, just the zeros across the line. So I just was curious how we might be able to help our height students who are identified as high cap and accessing.
And it could be as simple as the nomenclature of how the class is labeled. And so, but that that begs a good question is how do we and our general question is how do we track and make sure that we know we're going to be soon responsible to the state to be able to say for every kid, this is, this is how we're meeting their needs since they're identified. It would be similar to how we're meeting the needs of a kid with a learning disability. So.
So I, I know you answered the questions around ITech and BSA and that absolutely made sense, but I'm looking at the last column, which I realized the numbers are pretty small, but and and it sounds like we're, we're going to have a system in place of tracking this, but I'm curious if there's, if these are students opting out or families opting out of any sort of acceleration or could they just be lost in the shuffle?
I think it could be a little bit of everything, including how the classes are named. So if they're not called honors, then they're not popping up as identified as that's their service. So we, we have some work to do to tidy up both the how we call the classes, how we identify, even if a kid opts to not be in an accelerated or an honors course, then what are we doing? And I don't know that we are able to really clearly say that yet.
This is really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. The last piece that we're labeling under challenge is just our ongoing work to make our high cap population proportional to our student population. And while we've made gains, we're definitely not there yet. So there are a few pie charts, you may have already gotten to look at them, but just comparing the district population by subgroup and our high cap population, and you can see that there is some disparity in terms of there are a lot more white kids identified, there are a lot more English-speaking kids identified, and while we're swinging the needle a little bit and the Nagliary will really help us do that, we're not where we want to be. We also currently are over identified for high cap, and I think that's largely because we were identifying kids through high achievement rather than high ability. So we have a lot more kids identified currently as high cap students that we don't receive grant money for and we're not really, you know, there's this this big group of kids that we're, we know we haven't necessarily met their needs and we're not sure really that their their needs fall under the continuum that we're we're now establishing. So we're just a little out of sync. But I think our our screening and the work that we're doing ongoing will begin to rectify that over time. So Jeff, there are a few, three more slides, I believe. Did someone have a question?
I had, I had a question, Chrissy, and you might have answered this earlier when you were talking about the Nagliary screener. How is that administered? Is it like one-on-one? Is it like paper pencil? Like, is it computerized? Like, how do students take it?
It's computerized and every instructional coach got trained and went back and trained the grade level teacher. So it was in the student's own classroom given by their teacher. Fifth graders took it in two sessions. There are three sections. But we did it for fifth graders in two sessions over two days. With second graders, we will do it over three days for the three different sessions so that we don't wear them out. Most kids found it fun.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, as you're describing, I'm like, that's it, I do that every day. And my, my job is to school psych, do the cognitive testing. But I guess just it being into, it being independent and computerized. I just wonder, because I know, I mean, we talked about I Ready earlier, you know, and and while those are good pieces of data, sometimes just the way that it's that it's done independently, I mean, a kid could just push the buttons and rush through. I mean, I just wonder do, and I, I mean, and maybe this is a way, as we're doing the screenings, to kind of get you know, checks and balances, but I just wonder if sometimes maybe a student, like a, like a multilingual student, like I don't, I don't know, is it available in other languages? So you're talking about like disproportionality. I'm just trying to think of like how the the test, the screener in and of itself might have some natural barriers to you know, a student that maybe has attention deficit disorder and and can't sit there, it's, and he gets distracted and just clicks through the buttons. I mean, I'm just wondering about some of that in in how the screener is done.
Students who would have accommodations for an IEP or five oh four were provided those same accommodations. Teachers are really trained to monitor how students were taking the test. We did find some anomalies in classrooms where it didn't go as planned, and so we redid it. We have given one-on-one sessions to kids who somehow fell through a crack or two and we wanted to really see what we were doing. We had a couple, it was actually over a hundred, I think, students that we looked at in the MDSC process and went through their Nagliary scores, compared their I Ready scores, compared any prior high cap testing that they had done to really see, like, we didn't want to miss any kids because we were new at this. So we tried to be really thoughtful about not missing any kids, but not identifying any kids who who didn't have this need as part of their learning plan. Once you do identify them, they're your high cap students forever and ever. You don't ever unidentify them. So we wanted to make sure that we were doing a good job at it.
I just want to clarify that these pie charts, I assume this is all of our high cap student demographics. This isn't yes. So I, I just, was there any attention paid how, because this is the first year really we've utilized Nagliary, like how those students who are identified through Nagliary, did we see any improvements? Specifically, I'm looking at things like our multilingual learners.
We did for kids of color and multilingual learners. We saw improvements in the rates, but we don't have that separately yet because we haven't finished. We want to finish both second and fifth grade and be able to report back what that looks like. So we can see over time.
Yeah, I recognize seventy-one is kind of a small sample size. I just was curious if you noticed improvement using this new screen.
Anecdotally, yes, but I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, especially when we were going through MDSC, we, we looked to see, is this a multilingual student? Is this a student of color? What, what might their experiences be in school that would maybe give us pause about identifying them or not identifying them? So this one is about, you can see like subgroup, kind of the special programs for reduced lunch, whether or not the student has an IEP for learning five oh four plan or is a language learner. And you can see that the populations don't quite match up. The next one you'll see is similar, Jeff, if you can board it, it's by race. And then the last one is by multilingual. And just showing that we were, we know we have work to do and we're trying to set the set the table better for our our kids with different learning needs so that they are represented in this group and that we're not missing out on them because we didn't screen well enough. Besides the Nagliary, we still have the ability for teachers and for parents to make referrals and give us a reason to consider kids again. So that is not our only way to identify students, but we think it'll be one of our more reliable. Any final thoughts on the high cap update before we move into trauma-informed practices?
Thank you.
I just want to say, Christie, thank you for all of this work. I know that when you took it on, it was sort of you were the last person to put your finger on your nose or whatever. And I'm so glad that you took it over and I'm, I, I'm delighted with all the work you've put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm delighted to have a fabulous team. I mean, I'm, I'm reporting on their work really. They've been just tremendous to work with them for many layers down to the school community at Truman that has welcomed the new classes and all the different pieces of leadership and the TOSAs and teachers and coaches who've really put their elbows into it because it's, it is different work and we're excited to get it underway. The last thing I'm reporting on is the next piece of the student experience and looking at trauma-informed schools. We have a new policy that asks us to be more trauma-informed and to make sure that we understand the impacts of trauma both to kids and to adults. So we're trying to do both. And and just, this is kind of an update on on where we are with it, what we're doing. We have led a couple official professional learning opportunities for leaders and coaches, instructional coaches, both in November and December from different groups. We had Lauren Osterholt, who is one of our behavior specialists working through professional learning. She's a former special education teacher and her whole And her whole intro to this, first she gave it to the coaches and they were so like, oh my gosh, everybody needs this information. So then we've been. Trotting it out to everybody and now she's in almost every school working with staffs and her whole thing is behavior is communication. So let's don't be afraid of it. Let's try and understand it and then figure out what we're going to do about it. Then the next time in December, it was early learning and behavior specialists from um special services. Who provided a ton of resources and information on what does it mean to be trauma informed in a school setting? What is it? And and just a lot of resources and time for people to start to dig in and think about, how would I apply this in my own setting? What am I already doing? What do I need to add? They did some foundational work on ACES, which most people know about, but just trying to provide some understanding of. How are people showing up to work, both kids and adults? And what does that mean for us? How are we working on that? Janelle already referenced the Stoic framework. And we're using that as a way to provide safe, calm, predictable learning for every student and. If your teacher is not safe, calm and predictable, as a student, as a learner, you're going to have a harder time getting there. So this is not only for kids, but it's for teachers. How do I plan for this? How do I expect kids to have behaviors that? I didn't plan on today. Is that going to ruin my day or am I going to be able to understand it and roll with it? So those are big pieces that we're, we're rolling forward this year has been exploration for a lot of people and then we're moving into. Now we want to see it. We're, we needed not just explore, but we want to see what this actually looks like. And what are the results we're getting? And Janelle shared some of that anecdotal work. Um, our next step with the trauma informed work is to take eh. Allow guiding coalitions to answer a survey about their own school. Talking about what is our school's knowledge and capability in recognizing and working successfully with kids and adults who are impacted by trauma. Um, and that's straight out of the policy that we'll do this annually. That should give us feedback about what next steps should be. I know there was some work prior to the pandemic that got this started. And then during the pandemic, I think everybody came back in full trauma mode and we weren't studying as, studying it as much as living it. And so now we're trying to back up a few steps. And see um what else we need to do to address it. The last thing that I just added this bullet yesterday. Is in professional learning, we've been reaching out to different community partners. We talked with Peace Health a couple of weeks ago. About secondary trauma, which is the trauma that our adults experience as they live through kids' trauma or their colleagues' trauma. Um, and wanting to do some work with community organizations to better support our adults in understanding how they are showing up. What what that means for them as learners, as leaders, as teachers. And how do they mitigate some of that? Um. Some of the impact of that so they can keep their head in the game and feel whole as they're working with our kids and our and their colleagues. So. What do you think? Any questions there?
You, it listed, uh, those surveys are just kind of getting started. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Not have any results back yet and I don't know. I know we have a start date and I'm not sure when exactly those are going out, but in the next, I would imagine the next few weeks.
Okay. Love to know what the, what their results are, um, just to kind of get that feedback, um. Because I think. It sounds like a lot of people are finding it useful. Um. I think when I. Kind of initiated this policy, my hope was that it was not going to just be like a training checkbox, but something that actually is useful and practical. And. Beneficial to our educators, so. Makes us to see kind of what. How people are feeling about kind of their own knowledge or the usefulness and just all that.
And it. I I think, you know, those of you who came to Anderson with me on Friday, you saw some of the work that that school is doing for adult S E L. And adult regulation and being able to be online for their own learning and supporting kids and. I think that is part of a next step is really how do we take care of ourselves and provide ourselves the space and the grace to be human. And, you know, work successfully with twenty to thirty to thirty five other little humans.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Tracy for initiating this policy and bringing it to fruition. Um. I wish that you had been on the board when I was. Teaching in the district because um I could use some trauma informed practices still.
I've got a slideshow for you.
Yeah, man, uh, but um I do appreciate it and um I appreciate the detail that um. The staff has taken to run with it and make it not a checklist, but rather actually. Something that is important and helps support our, not just our teachers, but our entire staff. And I loved hearing the comment of behavior is communication because working with. Littles. Sometimes that's their only form of communication, so that's something that we say all the time. Um, so it's good to hear it being said. With our other students as well. So, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for, I think, including the adults in the buildings. In this work, I think that's so important, just knowing that the impacts of. Everyone and to serve our students best, we need to support the adult serving students. So thank you for that.
Any other questions or thoughts? Thank you, Christie. Uh, thank you, board directors. That's um, I think we had six updates tonight, so. Uh, it's a lot and appreciate you hanging in there with us and asking such great questions. Um, just as an FYI, you know, our next regular board meeting is March twelfth, so we have a. A Tuesday off uh in between and um that is the board meeting where we'll have the resolution for uh budget reductions. Um, and so I know a lot of people are are paying attention to that. We continue to get input. Um, through our um budget development page and the surveys and. Uh, bring that information forward to you. Um, we discussed in our last time together, the iterative process of. Um, trying to come up with the reduction plan. Um, and so I just want to call that to everyone's attention that that will be on the board meeting agenda for March twelfth. Uh, if people are interested, um, and then um potentially some action by the board, uh, at least considered uh at that. That night's meeting. Um, so I think that's everything that we had as a staff for the board, so I'll turn it back over to you, Director Sproul.
Yes, um, with that, if there's no other questions or comments, um, our study session is adjourned and we will see you all in March.